Welcome to the quiet in the room, please. Welcome to the Tuesday, June 24th, 2025, regular meeting of the Troughtail City Council. To begin with the pledge of allegiance, and I'll ask Counselor One to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's have the roll call.
Counselor White?
Here.
Counselor Davidson?
Here.
Counselor Lamy?
Here.
Counselor Andrews? Counselor Allen?
Here.
Counselor One?
Present.
Mayor Rittma?
Here.
Did we hear? Andrews? Okay.
Yes.
Well, very good. We'll move on to agenda update. Is there one, Ray?
Uh, no, Mayor. The agenda is as written tonight. No changes or adjustments.
Okay, very good. And to agenda item number two, which is public comment. Public comment on non-agenda and consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comments should be directed to the presiding officer limited to matters of community interest or related to matters which may or could come before council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with consent of council. Council and mayor should avoid media or tracked responses to citizen comments. So I'll start off with those participating remotely on Zoom. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council in public comment? All right, I don't see anybody here in the room. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council in public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment. We'll move on to the agenda item number three, consent agenda. Counselor One?
Consent agenda, 3.1 minutes, September 24th, 2024, and May 13th, 2025, City Council regular meetings. And 3.2, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Department of Land Conservation and Development for a community green infrastructure master plan program grant.
Before we get started, Counselor White?
Yeah, I have some questions on 3.2. I just wanted to pull it out from the consent.
Pull it from the consent agenda. So full consent agenda is 3.1. I have a motion. You were probably about to make it, so.
Yeah, I make a motion we accept adopt the consent agenda, 3.1 minutes.
I'll second it.
All right, please call a roll.
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Rittma?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Davidson?
Yes.
Counselor Lamy?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
And as far as addressing 3.2, we could put it at the end of the meeting, or did you want to take it up first? I don't really care. Let's, let's
Mr. Mayor, there's a, I think, code section, city code 2.08110 says that it should go after other items of business and before city manager and staff accord.
All right, so we'll put it to the end. Thank you. That's nice and clear. Moving on, agenda item number four, 4.1. A motion accepting the selection committee's recommendation for appointments to all city standing committees. And there's a list of these, and I looked up what happens here, and the mayor makes appointments and then the council approves. And that's kind of the order of business, and we are going to vote on this. We usually do them all at once unless we wanted to take them one at a time or some other order. Let me see if there's any public comment first. If that's okay. Is there any one who wants to address the council before we vote on committee appointments? Starting with those on Zoom.
Mayor Rittma, Paul Wilcox, trial deal? Okay. This is kind of lengthy, but it was a three and a half hour meeting after all. So I'll get right to it. First off, I question whether all the appointments should be approved in a single motion when there are counselor spouse nominees, which we normally call for abstentions. A few selection committee issues to cover. The first would be that I heard there would not be a budget committee alternate. Inquiry with staff in the Oregon Department of Revenue indicated that designation of an alternate is not allowed. The vacancies must be filled by appointment only. There are two sections in the Troughtail Municipal Code that appear to be noncompliant in that they make reference to alternates, one of which specifically mentions a B.C. alternate. I'll quote here from both the state statute and the municipal code. O R S 294.414 Budget Committee, number seven, not sure how to describe that. If any appointee member is unable to serve the term for which the member was appointed, or an appointee member resigns prior to completion of the term for which the member was appointed, the governing body of the municipal corporation shall fill the vacancy by appointment for the unexpired term. Troughtail Municipal Code 2.20.020, Committees' Selection of Members. The selection committee shall prepare a recommendation which will be forwarded to the city council for approval at the next available regular council meeting for appointments to fill a vacant position and a recommendation for an alternate for each committee if there are suitable candidates from the pool of applicants. Troughtail Municipal Code 2.20050, Committees' Vacancies. A citizen budget committee member shall be removed if they miss two consecutive meetings, regardless of cause or excuse. A second miss shall occur if they fail to attend the second meeting within 15 minutes of the start time. The budget committee shall then declare that position vacant and immediately appoint the alternate to fill the position. Troughtail has appointed a B.C. alternate every year that I've been following, and in fact, appointed two alternates one year. The fact that budget committee and alternate appear in the same sentence could be a violation of state statute. Next issue is the composition of the Town Center Advisory Board, which is five at-large members recommended by the selection committee and one member each appointed from CAC, PAC, PSEAC, PC, and HLC. The at-large members thus far have all come from within other city committees. Although the T-CAB language states, quote, "The city council shall strive to appoint at least one member of the town center district and one business owner or manager with a physical presence in the town center district." That hasn't happened. The at-large members represent only their own personal views, but it's not clear what the role is of the committee-appointed members, or are they intended to represent the committee/ commissions from which they come, or are they simply those groups liaisons reporting back as to what's happening with the T-CAB? There also exists a high level of crossover or redundancy between T-CAB and those five committees/ commissions. Since every at-large member is also a member of either another committee or commission, that will require at least their committee or commission appointing yet another member to be one of the five committee-appointed members. Then, there can be multiple members of a particular committee or commission who served on T-CAB but personally represent other groups. For example, PAC has an has an at-large member as well as their own appointee, and PAC members from CAC, PSEAC, and potentially HLC as well, for a total of five. Council also created confusion and uncertainty for potential appointees regarding their status via the T-CAB because in some cases eligibility hinges on whether they would be officially appointed to other committees or T-CAB positions by council. This stemmed primarily from the delay in council making the actual appointments following the selection committee meeting. Municipal Code states, quote, "The selection committee shall prepare a recommendation which will be forwarded to the city council for approval at the next available regular council meeting for appointments to fill all vacant positions," unquote. Ideally, all this should have been accomplished before the end of May so committees and commissions could meet the June 30th deadline for appointing their T-CAB representatives. My final issue has to do with appointment of reappointment of incumbents. The most recent selection committee process appeared to set a precedent I have never seen before in denying a one-term incumbent reappointment or in the same session renewing another incumbent to a ninth term. You also had one to you also had one new applicant get two full terms while others got none. Not exactly an equal opportunity employer. I won't quote verbatim. I won't quote verbatim here from their code, but Fairview has a two-term limit for committees and limits individuals.
Five minutes, Mayor.
Just another sentence or two. And limits individuals to two committees at a time. As a final note, if I were on council, I would definitely be voting no on some of these applicants. Thank you for your attention and patience.
Yes, okay. Yeah, you were right. That was a lot. Let me see if there was any other public comment. Paul, we'll address some of these. What else on Zoom wish to address the council on the matter of picking considering the appointments to city committees? All right, I don't see anyone. How about in the chamber here? Anyone wish to address the council on the matter of choosing members of city committees? All right. My understanding, Paul, on the budget committee alternate is that the state law changed. Is that right? Something changed that required us not to have a alternate.
On the budget committee?
Yes.
Yeah, because the state statute says the alternate can only be appointed after there's a vacancy. So by putting an alternate ahead of time, you're doing it before the statute says the vacancy can be altered. You can point somebody. So essentially, we appoint somebody before their vacancy, but the statute says you can only point somebody after there's a vacancy.
So we elected, Paul, I don't know if this is going to satisfy you, but we decided to not appoint an alternate to the budget committee, even though it's referred to in municipal code sections that you quoted. And obviously, we'll have to catch up the municipal code on that, but that's why we did not appoint an alternate. And I'm satisfied that's satisfactory. We're kind of required to do that. On the Town Center Advisory Board, I think you read something about strive to appoint a downtown business or something like that, but I didn't I didn't understand that to be mandatory. And we I'm just telling you, I'm satisfied with the selections that we've made. I do understand, we do strive to reappoint incumbents who are interested in continuing to serve. And in this selection process, we did not appoint one incumbent, but that was discussed at the selection committee, and that was the decision of the selection committee. At least, I'm satisfied with it. I don't know if that caught all the points you were making, Paul. But anyway, I am prepared. Now, whether we vote on them all, you had sent an email, which I read with interest because I had not noticed that before, that there is a subsection in our Troughtail Municipal Code saying the selection committee, when the selection committee selects someone who is a spouse or is someone is considering someone who is a spouse or sister, brother, other close relative, or business associate, the person should not should abstain from voting the person who's on the selection committee who has that relationship. That was at the selection committee's stage. We are now at the city council stage, and I don't think it's required, but there's only one of all these committees that has a spouse under consideration, and that is Citizens Advisory Committee. Counselor White, Diane Castillo White is appointed to position number one. I could I'm thinking, how about if I call a vote on that? You can decide how you want, whether you want to vote or not, or you want to explain?
Yeah. I did, I did state a conflict of interest at the selection process, and I did not question, I stayed out of the questioning. But I feel like I should be able to vote now because it's been decided, and it's more than just my spouse that's going to be placed on this committee. I feel like it's important that I have a voice. But I'll defer to council.
Well, I'll tell you what, and I was I overlooked the fact that the Public Safety and Equity Advisory Committee also has a selection committee picked Rich Allen for position number three, and Carol, his wife, is on the council. So I tell you what. I don't know if you want to say anything. What I was thinking, how about if I I will appoint I will start with the Citizens Advisory Committee, name the appointments I'm making, and then ask for a motion from council to approve those. And you can decide whether you want to participate or not. When I get to public, and I'll then do Public Safety and Equity Advisory Committee, and I'll announce my appointments there, and you can decide whether you want to vote on that one or abstain because Rich is one of the appointees.
I also, at the selection committee time, also declared that Rich was
Yeah.
my husband at that. I believe at that time, I didn't vote.
Oh, okay.
Although at this, I mean, I mean, I could abstain from voting for PSEAC, but I also agreed with Jordan Killie and Frank. So I'm not sure what the liability is on that, if I should just abstain for that.
I don't read our code is requiring counsel at this point for the counsel to abstain.
Yes, I don't think the code requires it either, and the government ethics statutes don't require it unless there's financial remuneration involved.
All right, I, I'll still leave it up to you. Do you want to vote on the rest? You want to vote? You might as well.
I've always done it in the past, but I've always declared the conflict during the selection process for that one candidate. But I also think it's worth mentioning that some of our spouses got on these committees at a time where there was a real shortage. We didn't have enough people to go around.
Well, and in my case, people should already know that my husband and I have very different opinions, and we, we don't tend to talk politics at home, and, and, you know, he can be on any committee he wants to be, and I'm not going to stand in the way, so.
Well, I think I'll just acknowledge that, as usual, Paul Wilcox is right. There is a municipal code section that says that at the selection committee stage, spouses should not be voting for spouses. And in future, we will do that, Paul. But at this point, I think what I'll do is I will I'll just take them one at a time. Let's just do them one at a time. I am nomin, I am appointing the budget committee, position number two, Heidi Timberman. Position number three, Sandy Glance. Position number seven, Evan Minco. The council approved. Let me make a moment. Is there a second?
A second.
Call the roll. Sorry. But let's just go through them.
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Rittma?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Davidson?
Yes.
Counselor Lamy?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
All right. Citizens Advisory Committee. I appoint to position number one Diane Castillo White. Position number six, Victoria Rizzo. Position number nine, Shelby Stephenson. Position number 10, Will Knight. Position number 11, Rebecca Sanchez. Alternate Tiffany Long.
So moved. Can I have some discussion on the motion?
Yes.
All righty. Well, I wanted to just kind of address, we also received some public comments on it, but we have a really longstanding and very appreciated member of the CAC on there that is also on several other committees that I was, I just wanted to speak my piece again. I think, you know, we have somebody who is newer to a committee. While we do appreciate the incumbents and obviously want to give people, you know, a good chance to see some follow-through on things they've been working on, I think it's a huge advantage to get new involvement, especially with a committee like the Citizens Advisory, which, you know, the main goal is to engage with the community and increase, you know, connectivity with the public. I, I was of the opinion that Tiffany Long should be moved into position six and Victoria to the alternate, purely from a mathematical standpoint on her involvement in several other committees and giving somebody who has a proven track record of actively going out there and volunteering and engaging and being at First Fridays and being, working the booths and doing things like that, and getting some good results that way, and trying to move the needle noticeably. I, I just personally think that putting, you know, personal milestones or anything like that above, you know, what I feel like might be best for the community might not work to our advantage in that sense and discourage further folks from being involved in the future as well. But that's, that's my take.
And I'll explain why I appointed Victoria Rizzo. And to further the discussion, it she represents, first of all, she's very longstanding on the CAC. The her position on the T-CAB, the Town Center Advisory Board is as a representative of the CAC. So if we didn't appoint Victoria, she would actually lose two positions of her appointments. And I, I hearken back to Twyla Harrington, who chairs the CAC. Her comment was, nobody comes to Victoria comes to all the meeting, all the meetings reliably, and nobody comes better prepared. And we discussed this at the, and Zach, I do remember you bringing it up. And I'm hoping that the council will support my, my appointment of Victoria because I think it's an unusual situation, but when you have someone who's really good and reliable and has done it for a long time, that isn't a reason to replace them with somebody new, even if it's somebody we know is also good. So I encourage and hope the council will support me. I will stick with my appointment. And Zach, if you don't agree with the appointments I made, you are free to vote no.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
It's a pleasure.
I just wanted to, like, second what Zach said. We talked, we had talked about it in that committee. We had a lengthy discussion. I kind of said my piece there, and I like, I agree with Zach. We did decide as a group, and that was what the group's decision was, is to appoint Victoria. So I want to be respectful of the group as a whole after that discussion.
Anyone else?
I just had an interaction with Tiffany. She was walking her dog in Sunrise Park, and she was stopped and said hi, and I said hello. And she was going around all the parks in the community and putting together kind of a portfolio or pamphlet of all the inner workings of the parks and what's available. And I think I just want to advocate for her as well. She, I think she'd be a great representative of Citizens Advisory Committee as well. Saying Victoria isn't. It's just a shame that she would just be an alternate.
She may end up on the CAC in the next year if someone leaves, but I can't, obviously. I still wish to, maybe if I could say, as I announced, but I understand what you're saying, and I'm sure Tiffany Long will be a great asset to committees in the future. Anyone else? All right, well, I ask for a roll call for supporting my
Second, I think.
Oh, wasn't there a second? All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Sorry, I let's, please call the roll.
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Rittma?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Davidson?
No.
Counselor Lamy?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you. Historic Landmarks Commission. I appoint to position number five, Donna Landers. Position number six, Leanne Stephan. Position number seven, Jim Hill. Alternate, Aaron Baumgartner.
Second.
So moved.
A second now.
Okay. Call the roll.
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Rittma?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Davidson?
Yes.
Counselor Lamy?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Parks Advisory Committee. I appoint to position one, Frank Stevens. Position number two, Shelley Reynolds. Position number three, Tristan Jones. Alternate, Sanford Nax.
So moved.
I'll second.
Please call.
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Rittma?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Davidson?
Yes.
Counselor Lamy?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Planning Commission. Position number one, Sandy Glance. Position number three, Adrian Costa. Alternate, Frank Stevens.
So moved.
Second.
All right, call the roll.
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Rittma?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Davidson?
Yes.
Counselor Lamy?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Public Safety and Equity Advisory Committee. Position number one, Jordan Wittrun. Position number two, Kelly Wesson. Position number three, Rich Allen. Alternate, Frank Stevens.
So moved. Second.
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Rittma?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Davidson?
Yes.
Counselor Lamy?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
All right. Town Center Advisory Board. Position number one, Tanny Stephenson. Position number two, Aaron Baumgartner. Position number four, Jim Hill. Alternate, Loretta.
So moved. I'll second it.
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Rittma?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Davidson?
Yes.
Counselor Lamy?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Alright, thank you all. And, uh, let's move on to, uh, Agenda Item 4.2, a motion to approve Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission's 2025-26 Annual Budget. Norm Thomas. My long-serving representative.
I added that up. I think I got it pointed in 1996.
It was a long time ago, Norm. We, we love that somebody interested and willing to do it. Thank you, thank you.
I did have a few Albany comments and we have a couple of presentations. You know, I'd like to ask the mayor and the council if they'd allow me to come up and talk to you. I represent you on the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission and it's been, what, six years? At some point, I'm gonna take a break. But anyway, it's basically, I'm here on behalf of
Introduce your colleague or let's have our
Andrew Spears?
Yeah, hi everyone, Andrew Spear. Uh, I work for the city of Portland, but as part of my duties, I staff the MHCRC. Um, and I was here last month for the Comcast franchise agreement, so good to be back with you.
Sorry, Norm, go ahead.
No problem. He has a short presentation about the project. Anyway, I'm here to present the fiscal year 25-26 budget for the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission. I'm invited by Mountain staff to present the budget items and questions from council. There's also a representative from, two representatives from Metro East that are gonna give a quick presentation. Cable franchising has continues to be, despite the drastically changing technology landscape, the only regulatory entity that local jurisdictions have to negotiate with cable providers that would reduce the public right-of-way for delivery of their four-part services. The MHCRC jurisdictions are served by two community media centers. Open Signal in Portland and Metro East Community Media Ingression. That serve our communities in multiple ways. Multitude of ways. They provide live gavel-to-gavel coverage of our city council meetings and county board meetings, budget hearings, media injectate sessions. They create real, accessible, culturally responsive pathways for our community members to engage in civic disclosure and they provide engaging, culturally diverse videos, content to teach individuals how to use multimedia technologies and express themselves. The fees collected from the franchise agreements, as you mentioned, provides the community media centers with operational capital funding, support to need providing these services to our city government and communities. Before I hand it over to the staff, I want to share two processes we use. The commission voted unanimously to recommend the budget forward and all other cities and jurisdictions have approved it except for the Crown. One of the other things that the Cable Commission does is we also keep track of what the FCC does. We ask, we act as advocates to try to, you know, protect our rights for the right-of-way. There's other things.
Alright, uh, thank you, Commissioner Thomas. And so I have a short presentation, just walked through some of the items at a high level of what are included in your Packet in 4.2, uh, and I'm happy to take any questions. So just a little bit of background, covered this last month with the Comcast agreement, but, um, the, the Mount Hood Regulatory Commission was formed by an IGA in 1992. Um, as part of that, the member jurisdictions are included in the last bullet. There's six member jurisdictions. Um, and then within the process and part of the IGA for budgeting purposes, the commission adopts and recommends, as Commissioner Thomas, I outlined, a budget for the Cable Commission that then gets brought to each member jurisdiction for approval prior to the start of the fiscal year. So this is part of our annual process to be with you for approval. This goes a little over, a little bit what I was just talking about. Uh, we seek approval from the juris, member jurisdictions. Uh, how we get revenue, right? That primarily comes from franchise fees and then, uh, PEG fees, which are public education and government fees. And PEG is assigned to expenses for capital. So there's a little bit of nuance on what to include and where those dollars can go for PEG. Both those fees are a percentage of gross revenue earned by the company paying us. Uh, and then the, on the expense side of the aisle, we have, uh, operational expenses for staff to operate the commission, um, and then also intake the dollars and dispersment out to you. So just admin costs around FTE expenses. Then we have grants that go to the community media centers for their operations and then also pass-through of dollars for their capital PEG needs uh, that relate to capital infrastructure, their purchasing that is part of the delivery of the PEG services onto the PEG channels. And then, um, we also have community media grants and I'll cover some of that and what those expenses are. Um, and then also, we're working through, the commission is working through a, the heat declining process as part of like, what is the, in the landscape of cable, what are the needs of jurisdictions? And then how do we think about the commission operating through time? So that is part of the expense side of this year's budget as well. This breaks out kind of what we were just covering in the last slide. So the total fund resources in terms of the revenue is in the top bullet. Um, we have a beginning balance or a carryover balance of six and a half minute, or close to six and a half million dollars. Then we have projected revenue decline. So each year we've noticed there's just the continued trend of cable subscribers exiting the market. And so we have a, a decline because of subscribers' decline. And so that's forecasted to be the decrease of the 700, 7,000. Um, and then again, those sources of revenue are the, the PEG fees and franchise fees. And then maybe earn a little bit of interest on that carryover or that beginning balance fund also. Again, we've, I've just discussed in the last two slides, the franchise fees and PEG fees. Um, do you want to note, franchise fees are 5% of gross revenues. That's pretty standard and remains static across a lot of jurisdictions and nearly all services, uh, where it's a franchise fee on percentage of gross revenue. Um, PEG fee, that's the, we brought forward the Comcast agreement and that PEG fee, um, in this budget, we were at 3% of gross revenues and the new agreement that was just passed is at 2.5%. So this budget is reflective of that change in the PEG. Um, and then, uh, operating appropriations. So the city of Portland contributes, uh, majority of the share of the costs associated with the, um, operations of the commission and so we're just noting that here, that that's reflected in the budget, um, also.
And just as a quick note, uh, probably covers, I believe, 66% of the budget. Do the other five jurisdictions cover the other 34%?
And then that interest earned, again, just included into the fund balance. Um, this slide outlines the breakout of the East County jurisdictions, um, and the revenue split. You'll notice your, uh, Troutdale is in yellow with the 28,792 amount. So that's the forecasted expected annual franchise fees that would be paid out to the city over the next fiscal year. And, um, just for clarity's sake, Multnomah County is broken into two sections just with how Comcast provides their revenue accounting. Um, fund expenditures, so again, we've kind of touched on this in the earlier slides, but these are the dispersments out to the jurisdictions for your quarterly franchise fees. So what we pay back to you all. Um, and then NHC, covering NHCRC operations costs, the staff costs. The community media center support, so that's both the, um, operations piece. So that operations funding for the community centers comes by way of franchise fees. Uh, and then there's the capital piece of it. So that's the PEG side of the aisle for their capital needs that are forecasted for each fiscal year. And then the community media grants, those are grants that are issued out to community by the commission annually that are for, predominantly for recording of media that will go onto the PEG channels into the Metro East website as well. These are the community media dispersments. Uh, Open Signal, I should note, Open Signal is the, uh, one, only serves city of Portland for its community media center needs. And then Metro East covers the five, four East County cities and the county itself. Um, and then there's their breakout of what they'll be, uh, forecasted to be dispersed out to them, the 1.6 million. And then the breakout of the, uh, operations and capital operations being paid to franchise fees, revenue and then, um, capital back PEG. And just, I, I think I referenced this last month, but PEG is unique and has some federal requirements by the FCC and kind of cable law that just ties to being for capital expense.
Yeah, just because we're throwing a lot of numbers at you. So to help break it down, the, on the operations for Metro East, the 699, that was a, an agreed-upon portion in the five jurisdictions. It's 6% of the franchise revenue, 5% goes to Metro East. And then the other 40% goes to the city and covers, and covers the budget for the Cable Commission. So it helps simplify that part a little bit. The other part is probably the, what we call the two and a half PEG fee, which, you know, is one of those acronyms, probably very few people know what it is. But it's public, uh, public education and government, that's what it stands for. And that's a whole different thing. It's always, you know, the maximum you can charge for a franchise fee is 35%. And the two and a half percent, we associate back to help build the rest of our system. We have one of the best systems in the country. And we'd really like to keep that, so.
Um, this slide here just outlines a little bit about the community grants, um, what we have seen over the grantees in terms of their demographics and what projects that they've included there in the last two bullets. Um, I do want to note, we have, uh, this past year, we did about a million dollars out in grants and this year that we're bringing forward, this budget is also a million dollars. So we're able to, even with the cable revenue declines, we're able to have some stability over these last two fiscal years, um, which I think is really helpful for our communities and is, uh, you know, of note for the commission and their working priorities. Uh, strategic kind of challenges, you know, I think we've had, uh, the discussion, right, about Comcast and the franchise agreement there and the decline of cable subscribers. Um, do you want to note, Zipley Fiber will be exiting the market by the end of the year for cable service, um, by the end of this calendar year. And so we'll, you know, we'll continue to see a decline in cable revenues. Again, that's just trying to help stitch together through the commission's work on the strategic planning about how we meet community needs and then the needs of jurisdictions over time with regards to cable and Cable Commission work. Uh, and then just what are, what are we asking from you? We're just requesting approval, uh, of the budget for this fiscal year 25-26. And then, um, you know, have any questions and then answer any specifics that might be from the packet or this presentation? I will stop there.
Questions from the council? Anybody? Well, um, I didn't see a resolution in the packet, but it would be a motion to approve.
We have one more presentation, so.
Oh, I thought you were done.
Metro East would like to give their presentation since it's the one
Of course. Have them do it. Bring them up. Stop, mayor, I'll just keep rolling.
That's actually good because the meeting's done quicker.
Anyway, state your names and, uh, welcome.
I'm John Luckton from Metro East Community Media and I'm joined by my colleague.
Seth Rine.
Alright, queuing up the presentation, yeah.
Seth Rine, probably my humble
Okay, you did alright. Okay, so, good evening, mayor and city councillors. Um, obviously I just did that, I'm John from Metro East. Um, thank you, most importantly, for your support. And really, I want to put a little bit of life into the numbers that we've just been talking about. So as you know, we receive our funding through the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission to provide media and technology services in East Multnomah County. This funding supports Metro East as a community-centered media organization and valued community partner. Next slide, please. As an organization, um, we focus on our mission. We use media to invigorate civic engagement, inspire diverse voices and strengthen community life. As this slide shows, we teach, we produce and we share. And we frequently blend these elements together to make something that is bigger. Um, can we go to the next one? Yes, we've been plying our trade for 40 years. Actually, I believe longer than the NHCRC has been in operation, so to speak, but for many, many years. Uh, can we move on?
Are you trying to say we're the rookies?
So beyond our local, you know, our, our commitment to local government, we worked with, um, last year, we worked with over 50 organizations, um, from school districts to Play East, to the League of Women Voters. Um, it's just a vast interconnected group of people that we work with that cover so much of what means and is important to us and to the community. Can we move on again, if that's possible? Um, this is really a snapshot, um, of some of our highlights, some great numbers from education, um, really hitting a lot of our target groups that we want to work with. Um, there's a few government meetings in there too. Um, and, you know, the last area of content reach, it just gives you that sense of what like cross-platform distribution has really become. You know, we were the cable channels, but now there's all these other things we can do. The, the, the videos we make go in many different directions and meet many different needs and people. So local schools and nonprofits and governments rely on us as an essential service provider and partner for digital literacy, literacy training, access to technology and obviously video production needs. We're onto one more. Yes. So we are mobile, um, that's really, really important. We asked and people said, hey, how do we get your stuff? Can you bring it to us? And we said, yeah, I think we have something we can, we can work with. So the grants that Andrew was just talking about, that's how we got the, the bus, the van going around our mobile media lab. It's delivering access to relevant technology and training that helps everybody in the community tell their stories. We just pack it full of iPads and out we go. It's a lot of fun for everyone. We go on to the next one. Uh, Food Fury is, is, is a show that we're really proud of. It's all filmed in East County. And our goal was really to bring people together through a shared experience of making and eating food. Again, we asked the community, how do you want to learn about other people? And they said, well, maybe over dinner. Well, we can't do that, but let's make a show about it. So we gave that a go and it's, it's done really, really well. Um, I think, yeah, so I'm going real fast here, so. Um, government meetings are one of the key pillars of what we do. Again, go back to the PEG, the public, the education and the government, the municipal is so important to the work we do at Metro East. And this isn't about a public record or transparency. What it's really, at its essence, is like a lot of the decisions that happen in this room are gonna impact the local citizens far greater than anything that's happening in Washington. And that's what we really want people to understand, that the biggest impacts happen locally. So be engaged, a civically engaged community is likely gonna be a thriving, happy community. Um, I think we can go on to this one. Um, so the wedge you see, it's sort of between like nine and 12 o'clock is kind of like, we're starting to diversify our funding. I mean, we're 100% aware that cable revenues are declining. Um, but we're also really aware that the community need is still there for what we're actually doing. So it's this juggling that we're trying to get going or this balance. And we understand that building this kind of capacity for sustainable fundraising takes time. But at least we've started and we're encouraged by the efforts that we've made thus far. As he lobs it over to Seth.
Um, hi. I'm, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about how we're listening to our community to kind of gauge what they need and stay relevant. So we conducted a community needs assessment, uh, over the course of the last year. And we, we asked four different groups about what they wanted from us in terms of what they wanted to learn and what they, what equipment they wanted to use. So we worked with youth, community producers and people on our, uh, media cohorts program and interns. We did, um, surveys at tabling events. And then, uh, we asked local organizations for their feedback, uh, both via survey and we've also reached out to, to do community listening sessions as well. We learned a few key takeaways. One is that most people were interested in using a community media, uh, center to tell their story. And that's the core of community media, is people being able to tell their own story. They wanted to deliver information to their community and they wanted to become professional media creators. Um, 64% of organizations were interested in our production services from how-to or instructional videos, art music videos and then promotional videos to talk about what they do in the community. And then this last slide, it just talks about the different type of technology people are interested in. I'll call one out, uh, with Reynolds Learning Academy. We brought a bunch of DSLRs, uh, to their class, but we started on iPads. Youth were interested in iPads, DSLRs, um, and laptops to check out, but they also want to learn about, you know, social media or live streaming. Um, and, and this is how we stay relevant, is we continue to ask, what do you want to learn? And what do you want to use? And that's, that's sort of the thrust of what that, that survey was about. And that's sort of the thrust of what that survey was about. Thank you for, we just wanted you to know a little bit more about us, what we do and how we're listening to our community.
They're not just the cameras sitting up here on the wall.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you, Metro East. Does anyone have a question for them?
Mr. Mayor, we'd like to ask you for approval of the budget.
Right. Well, all right, I'm about to invite a vote to approve the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission's budget for 25, '26. So let me see if there's any public comment. I'll start with Zoom. Anyone on Zoom wish to address the council on this matter? Seeing no one, I'll ask in the room, anyone wish to address the council on this matter? Motion to approve the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission's 25, '26 annual budget. Now, I would entertain a motion.
I move adoption of the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission's budget for 2025 through 2026.
Second. All right.
Pastor One.
Yes.
Mayor Reba.
Yes.
Pastor White.
Yes.
Pastor Davidson.
Yes.
Pastor Lainey.
Yes.
Pastor Andrews.
Yes.
Pastor Allen.
Yes.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you all.
For saving the best for last.
Thank you all.
That just means the end of the agenda item. I know how that works. Good to see you.
Yeah, welcome back. All right, we're on to an appeal hearing. Five point one. Oh, I'm sorry. So excited to get to this. Upriver Village. She's here. That's five point one. It's a report from Upriver Village. Welcome.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I was here nearly a year ago, in July of last year, representing Upriver Village. I'm the chair of the steering council, Jane Foreman. At that time, you asked me to come back when I had a launch date. That's what I'm here to announce tonight, and you'll see that in your, these updated brochures. So as a reminder, Upriver Village is a new lot for profit that will help our older neighbors remain living in their own homes, engaged in their communities as long as possible, providing social activities and extensive volunteer services in Gresham, Troutdale, Fairview, and Wood Village. We have been providing social and educational activities for about the past year. And on July one, our launch date, we will be able to start filling member service requests. The second prong of our mission. I'm here tonight to announce a big launch party, Tuesday, July first, one o'clock at Main City Park in Gresham. This will be a good celebration. Along sixteen months incoming. We will have a ribbon cutting. You're all invited, certainly. But we would love to have a representative of the city participate in ribbon cutting. The mayor of the village and the mayor of Fairview will be participating. A member of the city council of Gresham will be participating. We'd love to have someone from Troutdale represented at the ribbon cutting ceremony. Snacks and food and other activities, so it should be a fun celebration. There's a friend of mine said, let's not call it a lunch, let's call it a blast off. So that's our blast off date, one week from today. So is anybody available?
Is that the Main City Park?
Main City Park in Gresham, Tuesday at one. Tuesday, July.
Now, you've sent me emails and we are in the midst of a bunch of things happening. But I, you know, I'm being shamed into it. Fairview and Wood Village mayors, I've got to be there.
It would just be a shame for Troutdale not to be represented by somebody.
Oh, I'd be delighted. I'll be.
We would love to see you there. We'd love to see you there. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Do you have any questions for me? We're excited to start serving our senior residents of East County.
What are the ages that you serve, like?
Fifty-five and older, and then those four cities with a little bit of an exception there. Somebody is in unincorporated Multnomah County, outside of the city limits, but still has, for example, a Troutdale address. They would be eligible. We also serve disabled of any age.
It's a great service, I know. And my dad needed help. He had seven kids, so we were able to do it. But I remember we tried putting him in as a trial in a care home. He did terrible. He did so much better in his own home, so. And we brought him back home after just a couple days, so.
Well, and we know that we can't one hundred percent avoid people going to assisted care or prevent that, but maybe we can delay it. So, yeah.
Quite wonderful. Ms. Foreman, should I still send in an email or this?
I'll remember.
That's good, because we've got a long day tomorrow.
I'll write it down.
I remember that was the deadline.
And I should mention that we are now the eleventh village under the fiscal sponsor umbrella of Villages Northwest. So there are now nine villages in the Portland metro area. There's one on the northern Oregon coast and then one in Clark County. So we are the eleventh in that system.
Well, thank you, and hold on a moment and let me see if there's any, first of all, anybody on the council with questions? Go ahead.
So this is based on volunteers, so it's not like a visiting angels where people get paid to come in and help?
Correct. It's all volunteers, all volunteers. Although a couple of the villages do have some office staff. That's, you know, they're ten years old. I mean, they've been going for ten years and have that revenue. But everyone who is serving our members, who's going and providing transportation, handyman services, all of those people are volunteers.
Anyone else?
I mean, to me, that's awesome, because I used to work for visiting angels and I did, I mean, I loved it, but I also know families that can't afford visiting angels or private care like that. And so having a service that can come into your home and help is just an awesome thing to do.
I should also mention that our volunteers do almost anything and everything. There are a few limitations. One of those is any kind of direct physical care, like a home health agency or in-home healthcare agency would do. So visiting angels and those kinds of organizations are great partners for us because they provide something we don't. But we also provide a lot of things they don't. And also, some of the things that they do provide, like transportation and so forth, if somebody can't afford fifty to seventy dollars an hour, it costs now. I should mention at our premium membership level, which is forty dollars a month, that's the highest level of membership. Someone would get twenty-four hours of service, so that's less than two dollars an hour compared to some of these other organizations that are fifty to seventy dollars an hour. So it's a very good value.
Great, let me just see if there's anyone in the public that wants to ask you something. We have Ms. Foreman from Upriver Village here. Anyone online wish to make comment or ask a question? Let's see, anyone? How about here in the chamber? Well, thank you.
See you Tuesday.
Tuesday at one. Where's your Main City Park?
Save a piece of cake for you.
Yeah, I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Move on to agenda item number six, six point one, appeal hearing. This is a continued hearing from May twenty-seventh, appeal of system development charges by Yolo Development Group LLC. And Travis, I guess it says you're an head. You're on for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Reher. I think I'll lead out, and if we have questions, Travis can help. The history of this is that Yolo Development Group purchased property at thirteen twenty-three Southwest Cherry Park Road in twenty twenty-four. It applied for permits to change the use of the building from housing for the elderly to general unrestricted apartments. They were going to do some work in the apartments, change some configurations, walls, and things. And the fact that you apply for a permit, that also changes the use, that applying for a permit is enough to satisfy the need or to trigger potential to be paying system development charges. System development charges were adopted just a little over thirty years ago by the state legislature, and it was a compromise between Home Builders Association, League of Oregon Cities, some other government agencies, and the Thousand Friends, and some other land use groups. It was definitely a compromise. I have litigated system development charges. I've sued cities trying to get them reduced. So you understand that I've been on both sides of this issue. The city adopted its SDCs a few years later in compliance with the state law. That is required. You can't do them except in compliance with the state law. System development charges require a methodology. And the way it worked here was the city hired FCS Group, which is a group of experts, economists, and engineers who set utility rates, system development charge rates, and other charges that cities charge for utilities and services. They have offices in three states that I know of, California, Oregon, and Washington, and they're a reputable group, the city is. Their methodology is in the packet that you saw a few weeks ago. So the FCS Group provided the SDC study or methodology. Methodology is to go to expert sources and estimate the future impact of a development on various city infrastructure. There are five infrastructures that can trigger, that can be charged for with an SDC. Water, storm water, traffic or transportation, sewer.
Sanitary sewer.
Pardon?
Sanitary sewer.
Sanitary sewer and parks. And nothing else. Schools have tried to get themselves included in that, but they haven't been able to just politically. The city public works department then looks at the development plans and characterizes them. And in this case, you know, for sanitary sewer purposes, it was characterized twice, the building use, when it was made for elderly people, as a hotel motel. For transportation, it was characterized as elderly housing and later changed to congregate care for a memory unit, when a memory unit was created in the lower floor. The choices were the best fit and determined by the city staff at that time. They were also an appealable decision at that time, and those were made, those decisions were made, what, thirteen and twenty-two years ago? So the time to challenge them has long passed. In doing this categorization and parsing how much you should be charged for system development charges, the constitution doesn't require perfection. It requires, the Supreme Court has said, proportionality. And it's impossible to know what the future is perfectly, so you have to use these estimates, these tables put together by expert groups. The one that comes to mind is the International Traffic Engineers Manual for hundreds of kinds of land uses and how many trips or trip ends each one generates in a day. And that's what the SDCs are based on in every use except parks. We'll come back to that in a minute. Rough proportionality is like a percentage, though. It's not an absolute number. If the apartments here create a number, some percentage, say it's one percent of the transportation needs of the city or two percent of the sewer needs of the city, you then have to compare that to the city's needs. If there are only a thousand dollars' worth of capacity needs in, say, traffic, then that looks a lot different from if there's a million dollars' worth of traffic needs of the city. In fact, there's no difference, because it's the impact of the development on the city's needs drives the dollar amount. And that's how, that changes over time, but that's how it's computed. It is like a percentage. It's not an absolute number, and it's never going to be perfect. The building here was constructed as an eighty-two unit housing for the elderly in about two thousand and two. Ten years later, sixteen of the units were converted to a memory care unit. The city charged SDCs for sewer and transportation at the time of the change, but not for water, storm, or parks. And at that time, no parks SDCs existed. The city later adopted its parks SDCs, and parks are always based on the level of service that the city wants to provide to its citizens. And whatever cost that imposes is a political way of balancing that the city council did back in twenty eighteen or so. That's the last time, fourteen? Thank you. And so when you adopted that SDC, you had to, there's no manual for that, because some cities have lots of parks, some cities have no parks. This city chose to have a significant number of parks because they're important to people who live out here. But the main arguments that the appellant raised are that these SDCs may be charged only for an increase in the use from the existing use. But that's not what the Supreme Court said. And that's why we put a quotation in your staff report from the last meeting that talks about the other way to trigger. If a city has the authority to deny a permit, it can take less than that. It can take less stringent action than that and not deny the permit, but instead approve it with conditions. And some of those conditions can be, you've got to give us a piece of land for a street right of way. You've got to build the sidewalk, or you have to pay a system development charge. Those are all conditions that the courts say are allowed. But in this case, both the tests are satisfied. The city has a right to deny the permit because it takes away housing for the elderly, which is, there's a great need for here. But in addition, the impacts of general purpose apartments with children and teenagers and adults living possibly together or separate units has a bigger impact than the elderly on sewer, water, parks, transportation. The elderly don't drive themselves to work. They don't drive to the, they don't take their kids to school. So that is a traffic impact that's more significant. The same with parks use. Kids use parks and they need equipment. Like Imagination Station is a very expensive piece of equipment that the city has built twice that I know of, and I think it needs it again now. So all of those are impacts that the city can put into the system development charges and require that changes in use contribute to the cost of. So both tests were satisfied here, and the apartments have a greater impact on city infrastructure, and the city has the authority to deny the permits. The findings are all set forth, and they have lots of the reasons. A final draft was sent around to you today. I apologize, I had some typos in it, but got fixed. But here, the system development charges are both connected to the impacts on the city, and they're roughly proportional to the impacts of the apartments on the city. Those are constitutional requirements, and the city satisfies them here. So the staff recommends that the council uphold the system. So the staff recommends that the council uphold the system development charge as it was imposed and deny the appeal of Yolo Development Group. Happy to answer questions.
Do you have anything to add, Travis?
Well, then I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the council, yes?
I just had one question. So I know this is about the system of development charges, but are they being asked to do anything else? Like in Eagle Ridge, when they built those apartments, we made them do a turn, build a turn lane, a short little turn lane to go into their complex to keep traffic from backing up. Is there anything like that going on on this project?
In terms of public infrastructure, no, none that I can think of. I'm sure there were various conditions associated with the development because I know they redid some of the parking lot as well. So, you know, there may have been sort of design requirement type conditions that were opposed, but I have to look at the land use decision to crush myself on that. But no, in terms of like road widening or building a main, you know, utility mains or anything like that, there was nothing like that.
Do you have any estimate of the cost that Eagle Ridge incurred for doing that road project?
I do not. I mean, it was, I'm sure it was quite costly, you know? That kind of road work would be quite costly. That was actually a condition from Aloma County, as I recall.
Other questions? Is there anyone here from Yolo Development Group LLC? And would you care to address us? We're about to decide this appeal. I don't know if there's anyone here from Yolo.
Sure, I'll listen if you'd like.
You are? Well, it's up to you, but our counsel set forth his reasons and reasoning, and you're entitled to, we try to be fair.
Sure. Grant Taylor, you guys met me less than a month ago, I think. We've made our position abundantly clear to you. We stand by it. We think it is legally sound. We think the position advanced by your counsel is seriously flawed. We also produced historic water usage of the property and transmitted it to you compared to other apartments as well. So you had that to consider here as well. And again, we stand very firmly by our position.
All right. Well, thank you. Okay, this, I ask our attorney to, there are a motion that would essentially, this is a quasi judicial hearing, and we, we need to adopt the order and findings that we have if we choose to support the city's position. And if we do, I can read out what I'm inviting, but if, and then we'll vote on the motion. But just to understand, if someone disagrees with the city's position, the appropriate thing would be to vote no. But if you agree with the city's position, I invite a motion to adopt the order together with findings and conclusions prepared by the city attorney, just summarized, reporting that order, that the system development charges assessed against Yolo Development Group LLC or development at 1323 Southwest Cherry Park Road be upheld. The appeal of the system development charges brought by Yolo Development Group LLC be denied. And the text, if anyone wants to make the motion, is right below.
Were you going to do a public comment or?
This is a hearing. I don't feel that it's appropriate for, it's a quasi judicial hearing. We, the record is, we're making a decision on the record that was established. This is part of the hearing, but we, I think, unless Ed, I'm making a mistake.
There's, there's no requirement in your code that you do it. And I believe you did ask for a comment. I may be wrong about that in the last meeting.
Yeah, okay. Very good. I think we've satisfied the usual Troutdale way of doing things. So do I have a motion?
I move that the city adopt the order together with the findings and conclusions prepared by the city attorney, supporting that order, that the system development charges against, assessed against Yolo Development Group LLC for the development at 1323 Southwest Cherry Park Road be upheld. And the appeal of the system development charges brought by Yolo Development Group LLC be denied.
One second.
All right. And so, and a yes vote on this motion is denying appeal and supporting the city position. Please call a roll.
Counselor one.
Yes.
Mayor Rittman.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Davidson.
Yes.
Counselor Leamy.
No.
Counselor Andrews.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And we will move on to item number seven, 7.1. Public hearing. This was introduced on June 10th. An ordinance amending chapters six, eight, and nine of the Troutdale Development Code, amending titles three and five of the Troutdale Municipal Code. Erica Boll.
All right. Good evening, mayor, counsel. I promise this presentation will be fairly quick because nothing has changed from the previous first reading of this ordinance. So tonight, it's the second reading about the Climate Friendly Equitable Communities Municipal Code Amendment Package. So in your packet are amendments to chapter six, eight, and nine of the Troutdale Development Code, and then amendments to title three, if we're creating a new chapter in that title, and amendments to title five, which is the Business Licensing Regulations. So why are we doing this? CPEC is a program that administers a new set of rules by the state of Oregon, and it's in response to an executive order that was signed by the governor. CPEC really applies to regions with more than, with populations more than 50,000 in all cities within the metro region. So it's just not Troutdale that has to adopt this amendment package. It's cities throughout the state. The Department of Land Conservation and Development granted Troutdale a two-year extension to implement this code amendment package, and we have until June 30th to adopt these amendments. So it's coming up. I'm not going to run through all of the changes. I provided a brief summary of the proposed, of the proposed code amendments on the slide. So the proposed amendments address parking lot design, address pedestrian connectivity. They address the tree canopy and solar energy on large parking lots. It provides electric vehicle readiness through providing conduit access in multifamily developments. And then there's the focus on transit corridors and town center areas, making them more pedestrian friendly and reducing parking minimums in those areas. So the, the bigger policy question that Troutdale had to answer was choosing a parking reform option. And the state gave us three options. We could completely eliminate parking mandates within the community. We could look at a fair price, a fair pricing option, or we could further reduce parking minimums within our development code. And they had a big, long list. Planning Commission reviewed these three options and decided that option two, fair policies, was kind of the best outlook for Troutdale residents. We had to pick one of the many items out of 133 listed on the slide, and then we also had to pick one additional item. We, the Planning Commission felt as though we should move forward with creating a tax on commercial parking lots. We don't have a commercial parking lot right now here in Troutdale, but the state said, even though you don't have a commercial parking lot right now, you just have to develop a program, and that'll check that box. So that's what the new title, the new chapter in title three does. It creates that, those new standards. And then we went ahead and we updated our business licensing chapter to state that if you employ 50 or more employees, those employers would need to pay a $50 monthly stipend to those employees who choose an alternative transportation to get to work. And I just want to say that when we do these code updates, I'm constantly working with businesses and letting them know and further educating them along the way when we do, when we do these code updates. So even though companies, I've reached out to companies who employ 50 or more employees in Troutdale, I'll be doing additional outreach within this next, within this next year. So this was a type four land use application. We have met all public noticing requirements. And I do want to mention that we received two public comments. The first comment was that we received on June 9th, and I actually talked about that comment during our first introductory hearing on the ordinance. And it was from Paul Wilcox, and there was a list of Scrivener edits. Those have been made and incorporated into the packet that you have received tonight. And then we received an additional comment from Mr. Paul Wilcox just last Thursday with two additional Scrivener errors. So since there's Scrivener errors, we'll go ahead and make those changes before he goes to the code publishing company. So in the staff report, the code amendments meet all the findings for our text amendment criteria in the, in our Troutdale Development Code. And then staff, we respectfully recommend that the city council hold the second hearing on this ordinance, which amends sections of the Troutdale Municipal Code and Development Codes to comply with CPEC rules mandated by the state of Oregon. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, too.
Questions from the council?
I need to have something. With the tax on the parking grounds, does it have any details on that? How much the tax would be, where the tax revenue would go?
Yes, so the tax revenue that would be collected would go to further improve like multimodal transit facilities within Troutdale.
Stay here.
It would stay here, within the local community, and I believe it's 10%. Code is written.
Does the decision to charge for parking at Glanville Park trigger?
That does not because the main use is a park and not a commercial parking lot. And I've checked with the state on that.
Anyone else? I will hold another public hearing, just to be thorough here. So I would like to open a public hearing on the matter of amending chapters six, eight, ten, nine of the Troutdale Development Code, titles three and five of the Troutdale Municipal Code, Implement Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rules. Public hearing, and start out with anyone on Zoom who wishes to address the council on this.
Mayor Rittman, Paul Wilcox, Troutdale.
Yes, Paul.
I just have a really quick question for Erica. When does the $50 stipend for the employers go into effect with Appi July 1st?
Yes, although businesses don't renew their business licensing until January 1st of next year. So that is actually when we would be implementing that standard for businesses.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom? It's a public hearing. About in the council chambers, anyone wishing to address the council on this matter?
Good evening, Mayor Rittman and Councilors Tanny Stafferson. And although I'm on the Planning Commission, I'm speaking this evening as a citizen. And I know the Planning Commission voted to forward these code amendments, municipal code amendments, forward to you for approval. And although we still support that decision, there are some things that I think you should be made aware of. And, and again, I'm speaking as a private citizen this evening. And many of these views were shared by other members of the Planning Commission, although not unanimously. This has been kind of a frustrating process, and there's been several iterations that have gone on with this. And I guess one of the things that the Planning Commission typically works in is, does it meet certain criteria? Okay? And an example would be goal one, citizen involvement. You know, this is basically the same as some other decisions that have gone into effect. And most citizens don't comment until after the decision's already been made. I think we all know that. And if we're looking for any negative comments about this, we should probably just go back and look at the Planning Commission deliberation or some comments from the record from some of the previous CPEC discussions that have happened. And this decision was so popular that City Troutdale joined 12 other municipalities in suing the state for the legislation. Oregon Court of Appeals found that the rules didn't violate DLCD authority. But the city's representing approximately 250,000 citizens appealed, and this appeal would not be heard by the Oregon Supreme Court, and no explanation was given for not hearing the case. You know, the state may mandate that there's public hearings and a public process, but it really has no interest in addressing any commentary or concerns from the little people that are out there. Another one would be transportation. Max of one space per unit within half mile of a frequent transit route. So, you know, you get a three-bedroom home, and you've got a max of one space. Okay. Troutdale has one route that falls into a category of frequent, and that's line 77. And frequency for transit service is defined by TriMet as every 15 minutes and a quarter mile walking distance. This definition's also consistent with the National Public Transportation Standards. But the state's written a new definition for this, which is half a mile from a transit stop. And it's not a quarter, it's not every 15 minutes, it's a half an hour. And as far as we go, the best Troutdale does is 18 minutes between stops, and that's once at 3:44 PM in the afternoon. And I'm guessing like he hits a green light or something at that time. But you look at our bus service in general, between 11:40 PM and 6:56 AM, there's nothing. And I guess my point to this is, this is making it more difficult for a lot of people and going to make it more difficult for people. And I don't think, you know, there's, there's really a way to address this. The Planning Commission didn't have one, and I don't think you guys have one either. I watched a movie last night about World War II, and it just got me thinking about some things, and it just, you know, how they did things back then and how everything worked. And this is definitely a cookie cutter approach. I think we all know that. But certainly, I don't believe it benefits the citizens of Troutdale at all. And you're gonna, me as a citizen, you're gonna have a tough time convincing me that it does. And again, we don't have a choice, but I think we also need to know that the rules are being modified as we go for the benefit of this. You're asking people to walk a half a mile with the terrain that we have here and the weather that we have here? And we're really penalizing them for having a vehicle at all? And we're really penalizing them for having a vehicle at all? So thank you for listening, that's my opinion.
Anyone else in the chambers? Just to address the council on the matter of this amendment to the Development Code and the Municipal Code. If there aren't any more, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion for further discussion. Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to probably comment on what Tanny said tonight. And I appreciate his courage for speaking his mind. And you know, Tanny's 100% right, and I can prove that, because this isn't the first time they've tried to push this on us, and we've pushed back every time. And I think it's why Troutdale is so unique and special and small-town feel. And it works, and we know it works. And I've seen where people only have one parking spot, and they get very creative, and they start parking on their front yard, and then they have their trailers hanging off their front porch and stuff like that. And I mean...
Is there a chance I could make an additional comment? I know you're calling.
Well, I think the council would not object. I'm forward.
Just to be clear, we had a number of meetings about this, and staff, and particularly Erica Palmer, did an outstanding job of navigating this difficult legislation. And in my opinion, and I believe the commission's opinion, did everything that we could possibly do to delay this as long as we could and to mitigate it to the best possible. I just wanted to be clear that this wasn't the commission versus staff. The staff did everything they could to help Troutdale.
Thanks, Danny.
You know, and I think I said that on the first read, that you guys did the best outcome. I think you guys did a good job, actually, so don't take any of that offensively. But I do worry, you know, about a home rule getting eroded. And if the state continues down this path, what are we gonna do about it? And if the court isn't gonna hear the case, they really should have. And I think it's a shame that we spent all that time and money and resources and got nowhere with it, so that's all I wanted to say.
Anything else from council? All right, I would entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance amending Chapters 6, 8, and 9 of the Troutdale Development Code and amending Titles 3 and 5 of the Troutdale Municipal Code. I'll second.
Kenda?
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Rittma?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Davidson?
Yes.
Counselor Lanning?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
All right, the ordinance is adopted. Moving on to Agenda Item 7.2, An Ordinance Prohibiting Camping on Public Property in accordance with state and federal law.
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall from two weeks ago, this is a minor modification to our current time, place, and manner ordinance that we passed a couple of years ago. We are allowed to limit the time period that people can camp on public property, which we did from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. During that period of time, 6:00 to 8:00 AM, they can camp on the private property, excuse me, public property, which is required by the state statute. However, we can also put reasonable restrictions on not being able to camp during those hours in certain locations. We listed a number of locations, such as within, I think it's a couple hundred feet of any waterway, around city public works facilities, around private businesses. But we forgot to add city offices. And all this does is it just adds one more area that you can't ever camp at 24/7. And that's within, I think it's several hundred feet of a city office. And if you recall, it happened because we had a camper who was blocking the door to one of our office buildings at 5:30, and the sheriff's office says, "Sorry, can't help you until 6:00." And if you look at the other areas that no camp is allowed at any time, it would be consistent with our current statute. It was just an oversight on my part not to include city offices.
Understood. Any questions? All right. I'll see if there's any public comment. Anyone on Zoom wishes to address this? We're going to adopt this ordinance tonight, or consider adopting it tonight. So anyone on Zoom wish to address us? Seeing no one, anyone in the room? I don't see anyone there, so matters before us, I could entertain a motion.
Move to an adopted ordinance prohibiting camping on public property in accordance with state and federal law.
I'll second.
All right. Kenda?
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Rittma?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Davidson?
Yes.
Counselor Lanning?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
All right, thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item 8.1, A Resolution Providing for Current Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Budget Transfers and Appropriations Changes. Eric? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This, of course, is the exciting highlight of the evening, I'm sure. Those of you who have been on council know I come to you every year, the final council meeting of the fiscal year, to try and true up the overs and unders, the variances that occurred since the budget was adopted some 15 months ago, and the fact that plan and reality don't always line up. So as I described in the staff report, many of these are precautionary transfers to try and avoid audit issues for having minor variances. It was, I believe, last year's audit or the year prior, I was over-budgeted on a particular line item bucket by, you know, some $200, and the fund was more than $1 million under budget, but didn't have all the money in the right pockets, so auditors took exception. In any case, so a number of these are to address that. As I mentioned, it's something we kind of go through every year. Most all of these are routine transfers and adjustments. All of them but one are related to transfers from existing appropriations in the contingency category. Each of the funds remains under budget even with the transfers. The one that's not a contingency transfer is the very last one, the Street Reimbursement Fund, and that is to recognize resources that rolled over from the prior year where you had expected to pay the contractor who did the improvement work as part of their development project for Fox Ridge some six months earlier, and they just took their own sweet time finishing up the paperwork and requesting their several hundred thousand dollars of reimbursement, and it rolled over, that expenditure rolled over to the subsequent fiscal year, but we had long since passed the budget and not anticipated that. Fortunately, the local budget law provides for an exception to circumstances such as that, so that's the one transfer that does technically increase expenditures, because we're recognizing an expenditure that needed to occur in this fiscal year that was planned to occur the prior fiscal year. So with that, I'm happy to try and address any questions in the staff report or the resolution that the council may have. Any questions? Okay. This is a resolution providing for current fiscal year 2024-2025 budget transfers and appropriation changes. All right, I'll invite public comment, starting with Zoom. Anyone on Zoom wish to address the council on this?
Mayor Rittma, Paul Wilcox, Troutdale?
Yes, Paul.
Okay, this will be quicker than my first one. I'll see if I can introduce some excitement for Eric.
I have questions about a couple of the listed transfers. The first one is, quote, "Budget transfer from contingency to the Tourism and Economic Development Division to provide for the unanticipated additional expenses associated with the recent council action for the $7,500 sponsorship of the Mount Hood Jazz Festival and $15,000 Cascadia Arts Association 2025 Summer Hardwalk Festival sponsorship." End quote. I see the phrase "unanticipated additional expenses." I can understand "unanticipated" and "necessary" as the phrase applies to an unexpected mechanical failure such as an HVAC compressor or well pump and motor, as referenced elsewhere. But I'm not sure that the requests in this transfer are entirely unanticipated when the event sponsors routinely return to council requesting sponsorship donations. As a matter of fact, under GL account number 8230 on page 110 of the current budget, art festival, cruise-in, et cetera, appear in parentheses under "city-sponsored events." To her credit, Counselor Allen asked at both council meetings when these requests were made whether funds were in the budget, and was told by staff that those funds were not specifically in the budget. Yet there's a line item there for $25,000. The obvious question is, why was the $25,000 budgeted not sufficient without having to draw on contingency? The other transfer was, I'll skip all the introductory stuff, additional expenses associated with $17,000 of community events costs for First Fridays in 2024, Tree Lighting and Wendy Wonderland 2024 events and for additional visitor center greeter labor costs, and $23,000 for sewer SDC charges for the city-owned facility, these two sugar pine necessary to correct the incomplete prior permitting process. Under that same GL account number, there are line items of $40,000 for First Fridays and $25,000 for Wendy Wonderland. If those combined were exceeded by $17,000, it seems to me it would have been prudent to consider increasing the allocations in the next budget, or at least notifying the budget committee of the known potential deficit going forward. If the $17,000 referred to visitor center greeter pay, there's a separate line item for that, 0188-8044. The 2025 budget allocates the same, exact same amounts under 80 to 30. Also, how does the $115,000 plus from the 0.95% TLT relate to this funding? I'd also appreciate a more detailed explanation of the $23,000 for sewer SDC charges associated with Sugar Pine. And so for this one, thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Paul. Let me see if there's any other public comment, and I'll invite Eric to answer that, if possible. Anyone else on Zoom? Wish to address the council on the budget transfers and appropriations changes? Anyone in the chamber wish to address the council? Eric, I wonder if you have an explanation for Paul? I'm sure not satisfactory to Paul. Council has historically approved expenditures to support community events, nonprofit groups, residential groups, and we have historically recorded those as part of the year-end budget transfers. The allocation in the budgets are intended to be generic, whereas these are intended to explicitly list them so that we disclose them for the record rather than sort of just being buried in some $25,000. Phrasing regarding "unanticipated," from the local budget law standpoint, anything that's not in the budget, not provided for meets the expectation that it's, quote, "unanticipated for" because you did not budget for it. Certainly, Paul views it differently, and he's entitled to do so. As it relates to the transfers on Sugar Pine, there was unfortunately multiple miscommunications between the former Public Goods Director and former Art Superintendent related to some permitting activities going on for seating expansion down at Sugar Pine back when it occurs. And as a result, the permit process related to the SDC charges was not completed. When Sugar Pine was completing a subsequent permit, that discrepancy became known. The transfer on the part of the city is both related to the downtown subsidy program that we had at the time, as well as we are the landlord, we are the property owner of that real estate, Sugar Pine. Both of those components are intended and involved in making the SDC funds whole for what they should have received, which is what we did with the subsidy program, because the impact on the infrastructure doesn't change regardless of who the user is. So the general fund was the one responsible for making those payments. It should have occurred back then. We discovered it recently, and we're addressing it now to correct that so that, again, that the SDC funds are made whole. And I forget, it was another comment. Well, this, yeah, this is, seems to me the way we've always done it. As far as whether we donate to the Jazz Festival or the arts group, it seems prudent to do it this way rather than put in the budget that we're going to donate to them. We want them to come and ask and decide whether we want to, so... Staff wants council to explicitly make that decision, so we don't want there to be $25,000 pot that, quote, "Staff has the authorization to spend," and then staff is making the determination of what groups to hand it out to. So we're providing for it, but we're wanting to make sure that it's a policy decision rather than a discretionary decision on part of staff. So is it absolutely necessary? No, but this is kind of traditionally how we've done it. Instead of "unanticipated," since we don't always do it, but we could just say "unbudgeted" or something, but anyway, I'm satisfied. The magic words for the local budget law, which keeps me out of trouble with the order. That's why it's... The more unanticipated, the better. Yeah, that's why it's repeated so many times in the resolution. Well, we do want to stay out of trouble, so I guess the question's been asked, and I'm assuming it's answered. So, and there were no other public comments, so any further questions from the council?
You know, I just want to say I just appreciate being transparent to everybody when they go back and look where the money went to and what the reason was. So I think that doing it this way seems appropriate.
Thank you. All right, I would entertain a motion.
I move adoption of a resolution providing for current fiscal year 2024-2025 budget transfers and appropriation changes.
Second. Thank you. Kenda?
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Rittma?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Davidson?
Counsel Davidson.
Yes.
Counsel Lamy.
Yes.
Counsel Andrews.
Yes.
Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Eric. Agenda item 8.2, a resolution extending the work of the ad hoc Public Safety Services Delivery Working Group. This.
You're being handed out a new second page to the resolution, and I'll walk through and explain it, Mayor, when you get it.
This is the group, I'll just explain that was, is, has been for, I don't know, a couple of years anyway, researching and finding solutions to providing public safety services in Troutdale, meaning fire and police. And the, well, the current, the latest resolution extending it had it expiring at the end of June 2025. And we need, I mean, we are, we extended our police and fire services arrangements for another year in a manner that the city could afford, but we still need to find a long-term solution. And so the need for the ad hoc Public Safety Services Delivery Working Group has continued. And I guess I'll say one more thing, and then Ray can address it, but how we're dealing with it. One of the longtime members of this group, Rich Allen, is, did not request and was not reappointed to the Budget Committee. And the way we've characterized the makeup of the group needs to change a little bit to allow Rich to continue to serve. And I think for continuity's sake, at least in my feeling, that we should make the small adjustments that is in the second, third pages that were just handed out. Ray, I'll turn it over to you now.
Ray, thank you, Mayor. As the mayor explained, the Public Safety Delivery Working Group has been meeting for about two and a half years and working through the process of renegotiating our fire and police contracts. We've extended it a couple of times because things kept changing and needs kept changing. And we were thankful that we were able to, obviously, as you know, we were able to resolve them, but not for the long term. So we have a one-year fire contract with Gresham, along with the other two cities, Fairview and Wood Village. And we have a three-year contract with the Homewood County Sheriff's Office. But those are short-term solutions, and we, as we've all talked, that's why I didn't do a staff report, because we've talked about this a million times, at least some of you. Those of you that may be new to the council, you have heard it many times, is that the longer-term issue is going to be how we can find ways to essentially free up money from the general fund so that we can bring back the Troutdale Police Department. That seems to be a general consensus that we'd like to explore that option. And one of the ways to do that is to join a fire district, which increases the tax burden on our citizens because they will be taxing them directly, but it also frees up this next budget year $3.2 million, which a big chunk of that would be needed to bring back the Troutdale Police Department. And as I know, some of you have said, and you've talked to people in the city, all I hear is, we'd love to have the Troutdale Police Department back for our citizens. It would give us control over them, it would make them part of our community. It was just something that would really enhance our ability to increase the livability of our city. So because of that, and since the committee was ending on June 30th, and since, because we want to get jumping, I want to make sure we get this going before I head off into the sunset, for whoever you pick for the new city manager will already have this train going and won't be able to say, oh, I better study up on that, and then delay, because the city of Wood Village is looking for a bond levy in May of 2026. We've talked about possibly having one or a fire district vote in May of 2026, so we need to get started quickly. Staff's suggestion is, is that we just continue the same group. I tweaked their mission a little bit, I made it kind of broad. If you look at the second paragraph, I tweaked their mission a little bit to be a little broad. The Public Safety Delivery Working Group is tasked with identifying the desirable and practical law enforcement and fire and emergency service providers for future, for the future of Troutdale. For future, sorry, for the future of Troutdale, my bad. Beyond the current IGA, said services may include, but are not limited to, reestablishment of the Troutdale Police Department, joining or creating a fire district with or without other jurisdictions, and any other options for those two services that would protect our citizens. So it's really, it's the committee to start doing a lot of the time and energy and research into direct recommendations for the council of how we should proceed next. The other paragraphs in there that were tweaked a little bit is that the previous iteration of the members was three council members, two budget committee members. Yes, Counselor One?
Oh, I just, I was, I noticed on this section four of the one that Kenda handed out, it does not include the mayor on it. It says two city council members appointed by council.
Oh, yeah, this should be.
Need to add that.
We, all right, I'm going to make it.
Which would mean, I guess.
I'm going to make it, for the record, I'm going to make some interlineations here. Number one, it should indicate there, paragraph four, thank you, Counselor One, three.
Be eight members then?
Well, no, that there's only going to be two members of the Public Safety Advisory Committee.
It wasn't from the budget committee.
We already have, we have one citizen member, one member of the Budget Committee appointed by it. Three, that's what we changed last time, three city council members appointed by the council, and two, it should say two, members of the Public Safety and Equity Advisory Committee. So thank you for pointing that out. Ed and I combined together to mess up these numbers and wording. Yeah. Yeah, and I apologize, yeah, because that was the last change that we made, was that. Three council members, two budget committee members, and two Public Safety and Equity committee members. So what paragraph four and five does is the current membership to the end of this month, one of the budget committee members, because we had, currently, we have two budget committee members on the committee, is Rich Allen. Rich Allen is no longer on the Budget Committee, so he is no longer eligible to be their representative on the committee. But because he served on the committee for a couple of years, staff is suggesting that we need to tweak the membership to make just a general citizen member to replace the two budget committee members so that we keep the same team moving forward, since there is value in the knowledge that they've developed over two and a half years of meeting, and to bring on a new person might just slow down the group a little bit. Maybe not, but it might, but we just felt it was good to continue the same group. So with the change in paragraph four that indicates three city council members, I guess I'm making my own motion, which I can't do to amend the resolution, and change it from three to two members of the Public Safety and Equity Committee, that would allow the membership to include one citizen member, which would be appointing in section five, Rich Allen, so that he can continue on the committee. So all this does is it continues the makeup of the committee, the individuals will continue to serve. We're just changing the definition of the members to meet the current membership. Does that all make sense as mud?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
So, and we might as well, while we're at it, in section two, add "for the future."
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Add "the" after "for" in the second line. So with those amendments to what's before us, do I have a, oh, well, I, I should, I should invite public comment. This is, we're going to be voting on it, and we're going to be adopting this change and extending the work of this group. Anyone on Zoom wish to address the council on this matter?
Mayor Rittma, Paul O'Costralde. Just a quick comment, since I didn't see Ray's last-minute adjustments. My question was how you're going to deal with the Rich Allen leaving budget. Sounds like you've resolved that, so that would have been my question comment, thanks.
Okay, good, yes, I think we resolved it. Anyone else on Zoom? We're going to be voting on this, anyone here in the council chambers? Okay, seeing none.
I think it's important that the group, the working group wanted, we asked, like, that Rich would stay on, and I think it's for the best of the group to keep that continuity for this specific task.
And Rich was on, 10 years ago, he was one of the two counselors that were on the contract negotiations for the sheriff, so he has a lot of background.
Well, good, I certainly agree. Okay, do I have a motion for the resolution as amended?
I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution extending the work of the ad hoc Public Safety Services Delivery Working Group with the stated amendments discussed.
Second, all right, Kenda?
Counsel One.
Yes.
Mayor Rittma.
Yes.
Counsel White.
Yes.
Counsel Davidson.
Yes.
Counsel Lamy.
Yes.
Counsel Andrews.
Yes.
Counsel Allen.
I'm going to abstain, just so, I don't want it to appear that it's a conflict because you all know that Richard's my husband, so.
You don't agree anyway. You don't agree anyway.
No, we don't.
And you said he wanted to do it, but, okay, all right, it passed with one extension. We now need to return to Consider Agenda Item 3.2, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Department of Land Conservation and Development for a Community Green Infrastructure Master Plan Program Grant.
And before Erica gets to explain or answer any questions, because I had this discussion with Counselor Allen earlier, this grant does not require the city of Troutdale to adopt anything. It helps us come up with a master plan for our trees, it helps us come up with a tree planting manual, it helps us come up with recommendations. But anything that comes out of this study will be recommendations for the council that you will all get a chance to fully vet and vote on. But this is a chance to, as I always love to say, use other people's money to perform a valuable service for our city without obligating us to do anything they might suggest if we don't like it. Now, with that set up, Erica, anything, maybe just.
I don't know if I have anything to add.
I just know that is always a concern in this city, is making sure that we keep control of our destiny every place we can, because it seems like every year we lose control of some part of our cities, we've talked about with the CFAC regulations most recently. And so I know that's a legitimate concern of the council, and I just knew that was going to be the concern. Counselor White, I've known you a long time, and I knew you were concerned about this, and I share your concerns, so that's why I jumped in.
The only thing I would add is through this process, there will be a lot of public engagement. So we plan to, you know, use the Parks Committee, we plan to, you know, do some snapshots, snapshot surveys within the community, so there'll be a lot of public feedback throughout this process. And like Ray said, all the information that comes out of this work will be coming back to the council for review.
That helped a lot.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I think that kind of clears it up, but I was, because we've had, we had one grant that, and we had those nice, you might not know about them, but really nice drawings of our downtown. And that consultant said, don't plant any trees that block the views of Broughton Bluff or Sunrise Park and things like that. And then we recently just have, you set up and were involved with the Outfire grant, and they're kind of saying, you know, don't plant it near buildings and remove shrubbery, so. And then we, council years ago addressed the street tree issue, quite lengthy, and that's when we set up the fund for people that couldn't afford to repair their sidewalk. And we allowed them to pick different types of trees that don't buckle the sidewalk, or even a shrub if they prefer that. They just didn't want to see us going backwards on that. You know, I saw the damage those flowering pears did along Cherry Park, a few near the post office. Yeah, and that had to be an expensive repair. And it was a shame to lose those trees, too, because they were just starting to mature and flower like they're supposed to, and they got turned into firewood. So I guess it sounds like you guys are going to be mindful of those things, so that's all. And I was also envisioning, you know, increasing our, we are Tree City USA, but to increase our tree canopy by 30%, I'm just going, man, we're going to have to hire a whole crew to do this. And then take, trees are expensive to take care of as well, you know, as they start to get old and you got to take them out, and, you know, one tree can cost over $10,000 depending on where it's at. So those were my concerns. Thank you for listening.
Do we noted all your concerns?
Good enough. Well, this, I move, how about, I'll make the motion since I delayed everybody. I move adoption of 3.2, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Department of Land Conservation and Development for a Community Green Infrastructure Master Plan Program Grant.
All right, Kenda?
Counsel One.
Yes.
Mayor Rittma.
Yes.
Counsel White.
Yes.
Counsel Davidson.
Yes.
Counsel Lamy.
Yes.
Counsel Andrews.
Yes.
Counsel Allen.
Yes.
All right, very good, and we'll move on to Agenda Item number nine, staff communication.
Thank you, Mayor. Number one, tomorrow, you guys are going to be busy, guys and gals, so be in here at 8:30 tomorrow morning.
Later then.
Later then, and we'll have light breakfast snacks for you, coffee, et cetera, for you. And then on Thursday morning, we are starting at nine o'clock, so you can sleep in Thursday morning. So we'll be back here at nine o'clock on Thursday morning also. We have one more council meeting, after all the stuff you're going to be doing this week. It's nice to know you get next week off. Yeah, and a council meeting on July 8th, and so far isn't looking too onerous, so that's good. Third, the League of Oregon Cities Conference is going to be coming October 2nd through the 4th. Now, normally, it's a little bit of a problem because you have to travel out of town, and so a lot of you because of work. This year, it's in the city of Portland, so it'll be downtown Portland. It's good news, bad news. Good news is it's short, so you can go maybe part of the sessions and show up when you want to. Bad news is you're going to have to live at home, we're not going to pay for lodging, which is the same as we did seven years ago when it was in Portland.
Homewood County still hands out tents.
Ah, tents, you could get a tent from Homewood County, and then the city portal will confiscate them because they have no camping ordinance. Really cool how they handle that. So anyway, if you are interested in going to the League of Oregon Cities, get ahold of Sarah. It's not so critical this time, because before we had to jump on lodging, you know, to get lodging at the convention hotel, but right now, it's just registering you for the conference. So if you're interested in going for part of it, you may want to reach out to Sarah. She can give you the tentative agenda for it, or Ken, if you can make a note, once we have an agenda, to send it to them. So we're not quite as rushed, but just wanted to let you know, look at your calendar in case you're interested in going down there for some of those sessions. Number four, we will not be having a First Friday in July because it's 4th of July. For the vendors and the citizens, it wasn't a day to consider, they might, we might get a good turnout on that. So we will not have one on July 4th. And finally, I don't know, I know, I have been to two tours at Amazon, Counselor White's been to tours, I think Counsel Rittma's been to tours. They are offering a tour Friday morning at 11 o'clock. If you're interested, email me by tomorrow morning, would you please, and let me know. It's about an hour, it's just at our thing, at our town, they give you an inside tour of how it works. And I will tell you, the first one I did seven, eight years ago, I was fascinated about how the process works and how robots and humans work together and how they get stuff to you within a day. It's crazy. So if you're interested in that tour from 11 to 12 on Friday, let me know, and I will connect you with LA, who's our rep at Amazon. They, every two or three years, they open us up to let us come see, which is very nice of them. So anyway, if you're interested, let me know, it's this Friday from 11 to 12, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Well, busy week. I do say, if you haven't seen the inside of the Amazon, it's just amazing. Okay, council communications, we'll start with you, Counsel One.
I got nothing.
And I guess I'm next. I, I'll just say, I went down to the county commissioners today to, the sheriff was presenting her intergovernmental agreement with Troutdale to the commissioners. It wasn't the actual hearing or approval, but I did go down to, at the sheriff's request and said some kind words, and hard to tell what the commissioners, when, it sounded okay to me. They didn't, they didn't object. And I, I just have to say, there was a local thing that happened last Saturday. I went on the Sasquatch bus, this was a Troutdale historic, I'm president of the Troutdale Historical Society, and. Society, and the, we, we arranged for a bus trip on Sasquatch, which, if you've ever seen, they're, they have these double-decked big buses that are pretty nice and impressive, and they have smaller ones, too, and they offer shuttles, they're a local business out of, down at the, the malls. But we went to the National Neon Sign Museum in the Dallas, and it was just amazing. Anyway, it, nothing you probably haven't seen before, we've all seen neon signs, but the enthusiasm of the place, and they're, they're busy redoing the carousel at, that used to be at, I don't know, somewhere in Portland, beating the horses, that's another project that they're doing. Anyway, it was just a fascinating day, and if you ever have a chance to take one of those Sasquatch bus tours, going up the gorge and down, which I drive quite often in a car, seeing it from the upper deck of one of these buses is, it's just amazing. So I just recommend it. The, I guess the last thing I'll mention is that this Saturday, which is the 29th, I believe, the Troutdale Historical Society is, has a youth Columbia Kids Club, which is educational series designed to engage young learners with fun, hands-on lessons and regional history. It'll be held at the Masonic Building at Second and Harlow, is it? Anyway, just down the street, the Masonic Building, but it is a Troutdale Historical Society event, and it's free and it's for kids. And it's from, that Sunday, 3 to 5. That's all, that's all I have. One?
Oh, that sounds fun. If you haven't gone to Amazon, it is worth going, and we, we went to the Kent location, and we also got to see their corporate headquarters in Seattle before we placed one out here, and I've also been to this one, but I thought if, if we're sending people there, that, I know Amazon does a lot of outreach for the community, especially in the cities that they are sited in, and maybe we could, you know, have somebody be an ambassador and reach out to them to maybe help us with some of our events, so we're not just taking it out of the general pond. I think they would do it, I think it would just be a matter of asking, so. Are you going, Ray?
Um, not, probably not, I'll be there, if anybody's going, I'll be there at 11 to meet you there and get you started, but I won't stay, because I've, I've had three tours. And it is fascinating, but I will, whoever wants to come, I will meet you there at 11, connect with Ellie, and they do a really good job, I mean, Amazon, they know what they're doing. Your Jeff Bezos isn't gonna be there, he's getting married in Venice, but that's okay, they still hungry.
That's why I won't be able to go.
You got it, I do.
And I just want to wish everyone a happy and safe 4th of July.
I just wanted to congratulate Counselor Andrews on the new addition to his family, Ezra, so congratulations there, and I just wanted to thank for all the service to the city.
Hold on, it's on, it's on the screen.
Yeah, this is Ezra right here. Yeah, thank you, appreciate that, yeah, everyone's healthy, wife's amazing. I'm not, wasn't trying to hijack, I just, yeah, I got him, got him right here, so. But yeah, I appreciate you guys, I'll, I'll be there in person as much as I can this week, I got some additional support with family in town, so should help free me up a little bit, just with my other, other girl, Zinnia, so, appreciate you guys.
John? Oh, are you done?
Well, no, I wanted to thank Victoria for all her service to the city, and my, my no vote was nothing against Victoria, I just was, wanted to advocate for Tiffany, because I know she would be a great resource to the city, too, so. Can I take a minute and explain why I voted no on the?
You sure?
No, you said it. Check with that.
Okay, so I have struggled for the last couple of weeks with whether, initially, when that structure was built, it was the SDC was where calculated problems, that a hotel was the problem. So, then, I was gonna vote no, and then I've kind of vacillated back and forth, because if you notice, the original paperwork came out, got changed, part of that is because there were 16 units that were charged for in 2013, that actually, they have credited them the SDCs for, because it was not 85, 98 units, it was still 80, 82. So I'm still not convinced that all members, knowing that there was definitely an error made in 2012, and so, you know, what's happened here is legal, the question is, is it right? So, I went ahead and voted no.
Hey, Zach, do you, I mean, we can tell you have some, something.
Oh, yeah, I know, it's, it's great, I, you know, already, already spoke a piece there about that, but I will say, too, I guess just on the other, the committee votes, I ended up saying yes, just because, as I said at the selection meeting, I mean, I'll defer to the chair ultimately, and, of the committee, and I do appreciate, you know, Victoria's long-running stand, but I just wanted to make sure that that was kind of out there, and, and see what everyone thought about it. You know, going forward, I'll, I'll keep that in mind, but I appreciate Counselor Davidson also advocating for Tiffany in that regard, and I'll definitely keep that in mind going forward as we go through the next round, so I appreciate you guys, and, yeah, thank you very much, I'll see you tomorrow.
Okay.
I had a question on Thousand Acres, I had heard that there started cleanup, but then it was put on hold, and so.
Is this how you want to end my evening, counselor?
Just watch Channel 2 News.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I, I went off on Channel 2 News last night, they didn't put everything I said, which is thankful, all right, it's almost from Homewood County, but, yes, they had a plan, it was not well thought out or executed, and the, it is state land, harm state lands, and so because of the problems with protesters out there, the inadequate law enforcement coverage, and the failure of the Joint Officer Homeless Services to provide places for them to go, which has been something that I have complained with over six years with them, that they just don't help at all, people who are suffering from homelessness in East County, the governor called it off, the governor put a pause on it, we have reduced the number, they have reduced the numbers out there, but I just learned as of this morning, that the governor appointed the Oregon Resilience Officer to take charge, because if you notice, what I said to KTU last night was, the governor needs to appoint somebody with some power to actually take control of this and oversee this thing, and that's what the press release said today, that the Oregon Resilience Officer was gonna take charge of it, and as we sat here doing something, probably your own appeal, I emailed the Oregon Resilience Officer and said, hey, call me, let's talk, we gotta get this problem fixed. I also received an email from the Forest Service, and they're going, yeah, what the heck's going on out there, we're really unhappy, too. We, I just gotta be careful. We just have a very poor coordination of all the necessary parties out there, and I'm hoping that somebody with some heft and some commitment takes charge of it and can get it cleaned up out there. So I don't want to lose this momentum, because we've had outreach out for about six weeks, which has been good to help educate the people and get a few of them off there, so that's the, as short as I can give an answer, that even during the council meeting, I was dealing with two emails on this very issue and doing what I can to push this forward. Good question.
Well, I only brought it up because I do care for the people that are out there and want to make sure we're being safe.
I know.
All right. Yeah. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Got to be quick. All right, thank you, what a.
Complicated.
And we'll see you all at 8:30.